All right, I would call to order the city council meeting for March 12th, 2024. Can I have Rabbi Abrams come up? He's gonna do the prayer. Is he here? He's not here. Okay, so, yeah, so I'll hand it off to City Manager Adams and I'll do the flag salute. So please stand.
Would you please stand? Would you please bow your head with me? Dear Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for this great city. Lord, we just ask your hand remain on the city of Temecula and all its people. We ask for wisdom and discernment governing the conversations this evening, the discussion items. We lift up our first responders, our police and fire folks. You continue to protect them and keep them out of harm's way. We give you all glory and honor and we ask your guidance and blessing over this meeting this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, please join me in saluting the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Potem Kalfis.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here. So let's go on to presentations. We have a presentation regarding the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange. Mary Cervantes. Miss Mary.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mary Cervantes, TVE2 Manager, and this evening I'll be providing you an update on the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange and the brand, or the TVE2, and the brand new Entrepreneurial Resource Center, or the ERC. So I wanted to begin with just quick overview of the TVE2. We are a business incubator and a regional resource center located in the Business Park District of Temecula, and we're also at the Old City Hall. We are a 30,000-square-foot building, two stories. Our first floor is dedicated to our business incubator and workshop space, and our second floor is dedicated to our brand-new, again, Entrepreneurial Resource Center, which I'll share a lot more about in a few minutes here. I wanted to begin the presentation focusing on the incubator, so, and with that, I wanted to provide a quick explanation of an incubator versus an accelerator, because I do get that question a lot. So an incubator, both accelerators and incubators, excuse me, serve early-stage companies who need assistance getting off the ground, so they both provide office space, resources, education, again, to get these businesses off the ground. Typically, incubators will house businesses for one to four years, whereas accelerator programs have a more expedited approach, typically linked to a direct program, and will launch businesses between one and six months or under six months. And a lot of times we'll find that accelerators have an investor connection or some kind of financial support. So our program at TVE2 is an incubator. And just a quick overview on the current state of our incubator. Of course, we offer low-cost, scalable office space in a collaborative environment. Our fees range from $100 a month to $450 a month. We have nine private offices and 21 open-air desks, so capacity for about 30 businesses at our incubator. Our open-air workstations, they are at the rate of $100, as you see on the screen, per month, and our offices range based on square footage from $200 to $450 a month. And I'll explain another program we're currently running in a few slides here. But some of our facility-based services and amenities I'd like to mention, we have a great partnership with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, so one of the things that our tenants receive is a free first-year membership at the Chamber, so we're very grateful for that, and that's for new tenants. In addition to that, our amenities will include flexible leases, 24/7 secured access to the building, so our incubator, our tenants, our companies are not limited to 9 to 5 operations. They can come in on the weekends or after-hours as well. Use of conference rooms that have teleconferencing capabilities. We have high-speed internet, collaborative spaces with teleconferencing capabilities. We have a full kitchen facility, secured parking, and then all of our utilities, janitorial services are included in those fees that I mentioned. And we also offer USPS mail slots, which is huge for businesses to have, as you might know. So some of the things that the incubator companies receive by being located there are business mentorship, educational programs and workshops, as well as networking opportunities. And I wanted to note that all interested applicants, we do have an application process. You see on the screen is about a four-step process. We start with an electronic application. That'll move on to a quick screening with us to find out, you know, is the incubator a right fit for you? And if so, we'll move on to a 10-minute quick pitch with the business and our selection committee. So our selection committee at the TVE2 were comprised of community partners, and if they decide, yes, this is a great fit for the business, then we'll move on to the city agreement process. So just an overview on our, and we do have a standardized rubric for all to follow as we're screening them. So the current ecosystem at the incubator, we're comprised of 15 tenants. We've added nine in about the last year or so. And under, I also wanted to mention that under the city's community reinvestment program, we launched that in late fall 2022. We offered, there was $80,000 in that line item, and again, free rent for existing and oncoming incubator tenants. So they're all still receiving free rent, and we project a finalization of that program this winter, or maybe early spring. But that's the current status of the TVE2 incubator. And the logos that you see on the screen, these are the 15 businesses we currently have located in our incubator, we're very proud of. They fall into a variety of category, industry categories, including construction, consulting in the areas of IT, export-import or international trade, emergency management. We have a multimedia marketing and magazine agency, and we also have technology-based businesses in the areas of health technology, AI, AR, and video gaming. So a big variety of businesses located at the TVE2. That concludes the incubator portion of the update, and I'm gonna move on to our brand-new Entrepreneurial Resource Center. Very, very excited to share that we launched the ERC in January of this year in partnership with the Inland Empire Small Business Development Center, Riverside County Office of Economic Development, as well as the Inland Empire Center for Entrepreneurship at Cal State San Bernardino. So the ERC is occupying the entire second floor of the TV2, which is a 15,000-square-foot footprint, and it's a one-stop shop for all business needs, business and workforce, really. And the ERC will host program offerings, bringing together a wide range of entrepreneurial support organizations to provide training, technical assistance, and access to resources to our region. And the best part is, everything is completely free. So these are professional services, paid professionals, and there's no cost to the community on these. So in addition to our core partners, which are, again, the SBDC, the Center for Entrepreneurship in Riverside County, these are some of our other program partners. We have the Inland Empire Women's Business Center, who's a nationwide nonprofit. They offer training and technical assistance to startups and existing women-owned businesses. The economic, excuse me, the Economic Development Coalition, or the EDC, who offers site selection, pre-location assistance, navigation through incentive programs, business attraction and retention services, and support for workforce training efforts as well. We have the Riverside County Workforce Development Board, who focuses on employer and job-seeker services. We have an international trade consulting agency who helps with export-import, that's XM 2020 Group, and we also have the County of Riverside's Veterans Services, who focus on federal, state, and local claims assistance. So together, all of these partners, the ERC really services startup businesses, established businesses, job-seekers, site selectors, employees pursuing certificates, skills training, and development opportunities. So wanted to give you some insight on some of the programs we have coming up in the next two months here. Since we launched in January, we've launched over 10 programs at the ERC, so we're currently running all kinds of great programs. Today, we had an AI summit, but looking into April, we have procurement workshops coming up. We have a pitch event. Founders First will be holding a pitch event. Contractor Academy, we have an AI workshop. And then looking into May, we have some financial literacy courses in the areas of credit and managing debt, budgeting and saving capital. We have business formations, so legal workshops, and then at the end of May, we'll be offering a chef-to-CEO program, which is a six-week restaurateur program. And you'll see a lot of the programs coming out of the ERC are longer-term, four-to-six-weeks programs to launch, you know, retail businesses or restaurant businesses, things of that And in addition to our April and May programming, some of the classes you'll see all year round at the TV2 are listed here on the screen. We have pitch practices, Toast Masters. We have classes with the state in the area of tax. We have county caregiver trainings, OSHA certification courses in the areas of, we host that quarterly, and that covers the construction industry as well as general industry. And then every year, we also host a Doing Business with the City of Temecula, so that's a partnership with SBDC, city's finance department and city's HR department. We talk about local procurement opportunities. So I did put a QR code up there. If anybody's interested in finding out more about the classes we offer, that code will take you right to our website, which is temeculaca.gov/tve2. And we have a great partnership with TCSD's Workforce Development Programs. So on the other half of the screen, you see the Workforce Development Programs that we offer every year at the TVE2 as well. So very important to note that our Entrepreneurial Resource Center is currently seeking out affiliates. We invite members of the community who offer business services and are interested in getting involved with the ERC to apply. This is an opportunity to offer, whether it's technical support or trainings and programs, in partnership with the SBDC, have office space there, and so that extends our capacity to our offerings, the expertise. And there is, again, a QR code on the screen. If anybody in the community is interested, go ahead and scan that, and it'll take you right to the application. I also wanted to mention the Level Up Program, which is a community, the city's community reinvestment program, or one of the business grant programs under the CRP program. We hosted the Level Up Training and Funding. It's designed for existing Temecula brick-and-mortar businesses with five or more employees. Half a million dollars was dedicated to, I'm sorry, yeah, half a million dollars was dedicated to this line item, and 26 businesses will be eligible for $20,000 grants each to be focused on workforce efforts. So payroll, recruitment and recruitment services, employee training and certificate programs, applicant tracking systems, so fully on the area of workforce. We closed the application process on January 31st, which followed with a four-week training program. So it is a training and funding program, and we just finished the training component in February. So we're currently in the, we're reviewing applications, so we're currently in that. We're reviewing applications for eligibility, and will, more information on grant recipients is forthcoming. I also wanted to mention that TV2 and the city's Economic Development Department were proud partners of Riverside County's April Innovation Month. So during the month of April every year, the TV2 offers innovative workshops and participates in others offered all throughout the county. And this year, and the flyer I have on the screen, in partnership with our Southwest Riverside County Cities, the cities of Marietta, Menifee, Lake Elsinore, and Wildomar, we will be hosting a regional quick pitch event in Lake Elsinore. That's on April 16th, and businesses have a chance to come out, pitch their concept or business idea, and they have a chance to win a $1,000 grand prize at this event. And also, the first-place winner can go on to the Riverside County Finale Pitch at the end of April as well for an opportunity to win more grand prizes. So I saved the best for last, just in 2023 alone, and this is pre-Entrepreneurial Resource Center. Some of our metrics achieved in the Southwest Riverside County region, you see on the screen, we've had over $12 million in capital infusion just in our, in our Southwest Riverside County region alone. We've mentored, with our partners, of course, we've mentored over 700 businesses. We've trained over 4,000 businesses, that's training events hosted in person at the TV2 virtually or hybrid format, and we've hosted close to 250 classes just in 2023. We've created and retained over 1,000 jobs in our region and helped facilitate the start of 19 new businesses. So we anticipate this multiplying significantly with the Entrepreneurial Resource Center and the host of service providers that we'll have. And I just wanted to mention that I would be happy also to provide a tour to anyone interested. My email address is on the screen, a tour of the TV2 and the ERC. Send me an email, we can definitely get that set up. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Wow, you're doing a lot over there, for sure. No, very proud of that. Any questions? No? Well, thank you again.
Thank you so much for having me.
Incredible. So next, I'm gonna call up the Temecula Valley Soccer Association Girls 14 All-Star Team. So please come up, and I'm just going to read this certificate, because it's pretty impressive. "The city of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Valley Soccer Association Girls 14 All-Star Team for winning the 2024 Cal South District 5 President's Cup and Tournament of Champions." This is the third year in a row that the TVSA Girls 14 All-Star Team has won both tournaments, a feat that has not been accomplished before. The team won a total of 16 games, and each of the four tournaments, and each of the four tournaments it entered, outscoring their opponents, this is the impressive part, 77 to 3. That's incredible, right? Holy cow. Their display of respect, trustworthiness, responsibility, good sportsmanship, and fairness made them champions both on and off the field. City of Temecula is proud of their dedication and wishes them continued success in future Signed by me. So I want to come down and give it to you.
But go ahead, Coach. Do you want to say something?
Oh, boy. I think she wants to.
I just want to thank everyone for recognizing that 10 girls that are here tonight are representing the 16 girls that are on this team. We have six girls who are at school or doing other functions today, and also are my co-coach, who's a second-grade teacher, who's got work that she's doing this evening. But these girls really excelled, not just on the field, but off the field as well. This is a very unique group of young ladies, and, you know, one of the things I just wanted to share really quick was the fact that this is one of the first times I've ever gotten feedback from opposing coaches and referees after games, even during games, highlighting their sportsmanship. So when they say they represented themselves, they represented the league and they represented the city, well, they truly did, in every sense of the word. I'm very proud of their accomplishments on the field, but I'm even more proud of their accomplishments off the field. The ability they came together as a team, as a group, learned to work hard, learned to sacrifice, learned to do what was best for the, for the team as a whole, and these are traits that hopefully they'll be able to carry with them through school and through life as well. So I want to thank you guys for taking the time to honor us this evening.
So who is the goalie? Who's the goalie?
She's not here.
She's not here. Oh, man.
But I will tell you, we did have, some of the, a lot of these girls played defense. They only gave up the three goals, so they should be recognized for their outstanding work as well, I will tell you.
Yeah, well, it takes a whole team.
It takes a whole team.
Obviously. But who's your high scorer?
Who's our high scorer?
Yeah.
She's not here either.
Oh.
But here's the thing, I'm very proud of, there's not, that 77 goals, that's not like one person scored.
Sure, sure.
69 of them, and then we had a few others. We had three that got 20-plus goals. This young lady scored over 20 goals here. Bailey scored over 20 goals, right? So, and then, again, with our, our defense, we play a defensive-first type situation, so everyone sacrifices on defense. Gabby and Bella, who are two of our captains, helped lead our defense and really made our goalie board most of the time, which is what you want to do, but just down the line, every single one of these young ladies just sacrificed for the good of the team, and they always put the team first, and we always sacrificed on defense. You can't lose if they don't score. So, and every one of these young ladies were willing to play wherever we wanted on the field, defense, offense. I couldn't get them all to play goalie, which I don't know why, because they went ahead and do a lot of work.
Right, right.
But they all sacrificed and played all over the place, and I couldn't be prouder of them, so.
Okay, I gotta get a selfie. So everybody, get in, so you can see.
That means get over here.
You too, Coach.
Get in closer. Come on, Sophia, get in here.
No, I like talking. Ready? Okay, cool.
And then two more to go.
Okay.
So let's spread across this way, I guess, and here, one of you hold the certificate. And you gotta hold it.
There you go.
Yeah, I'll see if I can. Have you heard, I'll be, I'll be in the middle. Down there. Open the certificate.
77. Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Walk that way. I can't tell what to do anymore, no longer than Coach, so.
All right. All right, so next we have the annual joint meeting of city council, community service commission, and the planning commission, and we're gonna start with the planning commission. So take her away.
All right. Well, thank you for having us tonight, Mayor, city council members, and staff. We're glad to be here, and we're especially happy to be serving this city. It's a great city. So, see if I can get this going right. There's five of us. I have been the chair for 2023. Bob Hagel was our vice chair, Gary Watts, Adam Ruiz, and Fernando Solis are on our, are on our commission. And I'm gonna go ahead and read this, because I think it's important. What we do, we serve as a designated statutory planning agency for the city of Temecula. Sounds pretty important, and it is really important. We review and make recommendations on topics related to subdivisions, specific plans, zone changes, plot plans, and we conduct legally required public hearings, which we don't always have a lot of people like city council, but sometimes we do. So our last meeting was on February 21st, and just for the audience and anyone listening, we meet on the first and third Wednesdays at 6:00 PM, right here. And I do hear about people actually listening to our meetings, which is kind of cool, but you're also welcome to be here. And our newest commissioner is Fernando Solis, and he was welcomed in in last February. And at our last meeting, we selected our new chair, Commissioner Hagel, and I will be serving as vice chair for this year. All right. So first thing on here that I'm gonna talk about is our complete streets. And you ask, what are complete streets? And I kind of like this picture. You might not be able to read it totally, everybody, but it kind of gives you an open view of what our streets are supposed to look like. So there should be space for people, space for bikes, for cars, for mass transit, for shared mobility, and I like this last one, creature comfort. So little space. So this is our goal as a city, and we received this presentation for this policy, and we are, the city is complying with AB 1358 for this California Complete Streets Act. So what it requires is what I talked about, space for all of those people and all of those cars and mass transit. So, and this builds on the city's current initiatives of what we're trying to do for safety and access. All right. This is kind of cool. We amended the massage establishment regulation. We also added definitions, kind of cleaned things up with our tobacco ordinance, with, for tobacco shop, tobacco shop permit, and updated the definitions of tobacco product and paraphernalia. And so what we're trying to get away from is that first picture and kind of what that looks like. And so just kind of cleaning things up here for our city, we were implementing a tobacco shop permit program, which will include structural and operational requirements, and also an update on any of the retailers and their licenses. And this last thing is, so the state requires that a hotel not have more than 20% of their homes as, homes, their rooms as smoking rooms, or rooms that you can smoke in. So they have changed that, the state has changed that to 15% of hotel rooms in a hotel. As a city, we only actually have two hotels that allow smoking, but that, so just amending those regulations to keep updated with the state. Next one, and we're excited about this, is the planning commission reviewed an amendment to the capital improvement program to add one new project, roundabout on Deportola and Jenadia Smith. Woo-hoo! That will be amazing when that happens. So if you're not sure where that is, just drive on Deportola, and you'll figure out why we need that. Okay, next one, and this is, we don't usually see homes coming to the planning commission, but this was brought to us because it was a big change in attract home, as you can see with the pictures. And this is on 42150 Agina Street, which is one of our older, very much older communities, actually. When I first moved here, it was here, so it's been here a long time. And then our SMARN final, we approved, which is going to be where the Best Buy was in South Temecula, off of Temecula Parkway. And what we approved here was a Type 21 and a Type 86. So what that is, is that they can actually have tasting of wine in their facility there. So that's kind of a special license. So that will, that is what they came and applied for, and we approved. This is an important zoning update that was actually required by SB9. So this gives a good picture of, it's an amendment to Title 16 and 17, of an urban lot split and a two-unit development there. So where you have a home on this parcel, you can actually have four on the parcel, as per SB9. And then I think this is my last one. So these are industrial park, and it actually, I was driving on the freeway, and I looked, and I saw them, and I was happy with how they look, and you can thank the planning commission for that. I'm just saying. They look nice, and we have a lot of them there, and so we've been happy about those and how they've turned out, and these buildings are approximately 20,000 square feet, all off of Avenida Alvarado. And we have our chair next, Bob Hagel. And it actually, I was driving on the freeway, and I looked, and I saw them, and I was happy with how they look. And you can thank the Planning Commission for that. I'm just saying. They look nice. And we have a lot of them there, and so we've been happy about those and how they've turned out. And these buildings are approximately twenty thousand square feet, all off of Avenida Alvarado. And we have our chair next, Bob Hagel.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. So to start with, Planning Commission approved a modification application to allow a revision of the conditions of approval for a previously approved affordable housing unit, which is Vine Creek, which is located on Pujoal Street. The condition revision adjusts the timing threshold for completion of pedestrian access from the, the project to the Murrieta Creek Trail. The approved application, approved modification, requires the condition to be satisfied prior to certificate of occupancy. That's rather than having it be done before the building even starts. So that was to allow, hopefully to be able to reduce the cost of, of construction. The Planning Commission also approved a modification application to allow the Hilton Garden Inn on Jefferson Avenue to revise their existing Type seventy A.B.C. license to a Type forty-seven license. Since the hotel has a restaurant component, the Type forty-seven license is the appropriate license type, and will allow all guests to both the restaurant and the hotel, which could be people that are walking up and down the street, to go into the restaurant, to be served alcoholic beverages, including beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The Commission approved a development plan application for an industrial building located in the industrial park along Avenida Alvarado, east of Villa Industria. The building can be approximately seventeen thousand one hundred and ten square feet. That's the same, same development that you just heard about. So, from time to time, we do a lot of amendments to our housing element, and a lot of them are caused by the changes in laws in the state of California. There is over one hundred laws that regulate housing in California. So you can imagine how many changes take place every year that come down and have to be dealt with by our planning staff. The Commission reviewed and recommended the City Council approve the following amendments. We edit some definitions, permit employee housing and agricultural employee, oops, sorry about that. Didn't go. Okay, we're gonna have to go one by one here. Okay, so permit employee housing and agricultural employee housing in certain zones. Permit residential care facilities, and residential care facilities for elderly, which is seven or more units in certain zones. Permit community care facilities in all residential zones. Add supportive housing standards. Permit supportive housing, transitional housing, and low-barrier navigation centers in certain zones. Update emergency shelter parking standards. Permit accessory dwelling units in certain zones. Revise accessory dwelling unit regulations, and revise reasonable, reasonable accommodation regulations. Revise parking standards for multifamily residential uses, uses, and make other revisions to conform with the changes in state law. So that's quite a bit. The Planning Commission approved a public conveniency or necessity, necessity application for a Type twenty, which is an off-premises sale of beer and wine. Alcohol license for a new specialty market, Kennedy's Meat Company, which is located on the outer rim of the mall, and if you haven't been there, it's a really, really neat place and great place to get meats, particularly if you're into smoking meats. They have really, really good quality meats. So, planning staff takes turn in taking calls from our residents and those that develop housing and everything else in the, in the town. And they keep a log and a database of those items that people question. They don't understand, they're confused about, have concerns about. And they also collect information from, at City Council meetings, as well as planning commissions, and all, all other types of activity where they get input. That data, then, once a year, we review all the confusions and issues, and try to do maintenance on updating all of our, our laws, and, as well as the, the general plan, housing element, and zoning, and everything else. So the Commission reviewed and recommended City Council approval for amendments of Title five and seventeen of the municipal code to make minor revisions to massage establishments, accessory dwelling units, home occupation permits, and temporary use permit regulations. Establish battery storage and shipping container standards. Clarify the permitted uses allowed for the, in the open space conservation district. Modify the definition of specialty market and restaurant, and add definitions for health and exercise clubs. My last item, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit application for a paint and sip woodcraft art studio to obtain a Type forty-two, which is a onsite for-sale beer and wine alcohol license and a finding of public convenience and necessity at three, three-one-zero-nine-three Temecula Parkway, Suite D nine. And next up is Mr. Watts.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Bob. I'm gonna apologize ahead of time for reading some of this stuff. I, as you know, I usually try to boil down these PowerPoints rather than read the whole thing, but it's kind of difficult tonight, so I'll, if I can, I will. The Commission received a presentation from our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy, regarding the city's annual budget process, as well as an overview of the budgetary policies and procedures. This year we did provide, or this past year, we provided feedback, I think more feedback than I've heard before. So it was all received in good faith and, and implemented as appropriate. Our feedback obtained to these sessions were utilized to support programs, projects, and events recommended in the Budget and Capital Improvement Program, and were reported to the City Council in the May twenty-twenty-three budget workshop. The Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit and made findings of public convenience or necessity for a Type twenty A.B.C. license for the sale of beer and wine at a previously approved gasoline service station and convenience store located at four-one-four-eight-zero Sanborn Avenue, which is on the very northwest edge of town, near the border with Murrieta, for those that don't know. And in case you are confused by all the A.B.C. licenses that the city has to deal with, there are a lot. So we've heard forty-seven, twenty, forty, you know, two, and, and now there's ninety, so there will be a test on our A.B.C. licenses at the conclusion of our program. The Planning Commission approved a certificate of historical appropriateness to demolish the Al Otto House, which is in a nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight-square-foot historic structure, which was a nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight-square-foot historic structure located at two-eight-seven-one-seven Pujoal Street. We made sure that the staff had worked with the Historical Society to make sure there were not any problems with historical actions to that house itself, and they agreed that there was no historical concerns. The Planning Commission approved a modification application and a conditional use permit for facade revisions and site improvements for an existing bank building to be converted to a Starbucks, what they drive through at two-seven-four-two-five Inez Road. And for those that don't know, that's right there where Armstrong's Garden Center is. It used to be the old North County Bank, and then I'm not sure what other one, but. Our next item, Planning Commission approved a modification to the hours of operation for the conditional use permit for Calaveras Restaurant, located at the northeast corner of Old Town Front Street and Fourth Street. The modification extends the hours of operation for Friday and Saturday, Saturday evenings from eleven P.M. to twelve A.M., and on Saturday and Sunday mornings from eleven A.M. to ten A.M. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program General Plan Consistency Review, which included twenty-three circulation projects to the tune of almost six hundred million dollars, fifty-six infrastructure projects to the tune of one hundred and thirty-two million plus, eighteen parks and recreation projects totaling a little over sixty-two million, and four housing projects totaling twenty thousand dollars. And our final item was three community facility district-funded projects with the amount of little over sixty-four million total. For the entire package was a hundred and four projects totaling eight-hundred-and-eighteen-million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six, and eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Quite an accomplishment the city should be proud of. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended City Council approval for a planned development overlay amendment for Lynnfield Christian School to adjust the boundaries of three existing planning areas and to create two new sub-areas with Planning Area One. The year ahead, in the coming year, the Commission will be reviewing additional home products, review applications, hotels, restaurants, industrial buildings, other applications, and of course, probably more A.B.C. licenses. The Commission also expects reviewing the following in the coming year. Parklets in Old Town. Uptown Temecula Specific Plan Amendment. General Plan Request for Proposals and Consultants Selection. Wayfinding, South Side Loop Trail Pilot Project. Amendment to the Objective Design Standards to Include Single Family Development for ADUs and Senate Bill Nine Lot Splits. Implement New Annual Tobacco Shop Permit Program. A Request for Proposal to Build Affordable Housing for City-Owned Uptown Temecula Parcel, Located at Jefferson Avenue and French Valley Parkway. And an Annual Affordable Housing Inspection Program. And then finally, I would just like to thank our fellow commissioners for a job well done, and I'm looking forward to Bob's role as our new chair. And I'd like to, to thank staff, of course, I can never give enough kudos to Luke and his staff, so I want to make sure we thank them. And also the City Council, because a lot of the things that we deal with are either appealable to you, or they come to you for action. So we thank you for your support and hope that we're doing the job that you think we ought to be doing. And with that, I will turn it back over to our last year's chair, Linay Turley-Dreau. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions?
I just want to say, great job.
Thanks.
All of you. Thank you guys for what you do. I know it's, we were just talking, I think you and I today, that it's, it's a job that isn't always fun, but it's necessary, so hats off to all of you guys, so thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to say a couple of things as I close. And Gary already said it, but I really wanted to thank our staff, Luke in particular, and Matt, and all the planners, and everybody that helps us to be prepared for every meeting. We have to do our homework, but they certainly help us with any questions that we have. And Scott for doing our PowerPoint tonight, making us look good. We may not be as fun as the next commission, but we do a lot of work. I mean, we are fun, but may not look like we're as fun. I did want to say that we just, four of us went to the Planning Commission Academy this last week in Long Beach, and that was really great. We appreciate the city giving us that opportunity to become better planning commissioners. We heard from some planning commissioners who had to beg their city to come, and where only one could come, you know, from the city. So maybe sometimes we take that for granted, and I don't want to do that. I, we appreciate the city for, for believing that's, that it's important. Because I do believe that professional development is very important. Also, one thing that I shared in one of the meetings was that our city has done a couple of joint meetings with our City Council. And I think, as, as long as I've been in Planning Commission, I feel like that has been one of the most important things we've done. And I think because we kind of can see a little bit of what you guys do, you know, just by being here at the meetings. I'm sure we don't see a lot of what you do, but I think it gives you a chance to see what our expertise is in, and that we can bring that to the table, and that we can actually have a conversation. Instead, you know, this is a presentation, but that's an actual conversation and a workshop. So I would suggest that we continue to do those as needed. I think they're really valuable, and it was valuable enough that I said something to the whole group. So I'm hoping that other planning commissions and cities do that. And the last thing I wanted to say is I am signed up for a ride-along with the Metro Team in a week. I was supposed to do it a week ago, and then it rained, poured, and I am just really excited about that. And would challenge my fellow commissioners to do the same, and any City Council members who haven't, to see really kind of what's happening down there in Old Town. So thank you so much for all that you guys do. I know you do a lot, and we have those ducks in the water going, everybody, staff and everybody, so appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for what you do for us. You do take a lot of the weight off our shoulders, so appreciate that. Thank you. All right, off to the Community Services Department.
Good evening. Well, good evening. I guess the pressure's on us to be fun, so here we go, right?
Right.
All righty. Well, good evening, Mayor Stewart, Mayor Protem Kalfus, City Council members Alexander and Schwenk, executive staff, fellow commissioners, colleagues, and the Temecula community. It is our role as a commission to support the Temecula Community Services Department in furthering our community through people, parks, and programs. As the Community Services Commission Chair, it is a privilege for our team to present the following overview of our collective service to the city by creating community, engaging residents, and promoting civic pride the Temecula way.
We proudly serve as an advisory commission to review and make recommendations on topics related to parks and recreation. There are five of us on the commission. As pictured from left to right, we have Commissioner Castro, who couldn't be here tonight, Commissioner Audi, who was vice chair last year, Commissioner Seismar, who was chair last year, myself, who is vice chair this year, and Commissioner Kingsburg, who is chair this year. It has been my honor to work these dedicated commissioners who want to make Temecula the best place to live. Here's a recap from last night's meeting. We received a presentation on C.I.P. update and the budget engagement session. We approved the action minutes from last meeting, and we welcome you all to come to our next meeting and be engaged.
Good evening, City Council. Let's see. Temecula creates community through people, parks, and programs through our multi-award-winning recreational and cultural programs, community and human services, and special events and activities, which enhance Temecula's exceptional quality of life for all residents while prioritizing health, safety, and well-being. health, safety, and well-being above all. So let's just take a look at some of our accomplishments last year in the year of 2023. See, first, we implemented Temecula's Community Services Master Plan as the comprehensive strategic plan guiding our city through continued high-quality public service now and into the next generation. We provided accessible activities for our entire community and supported inclusive programming and classes. We increased community participation while ensuring and maintaining high-quality enriching and engaging programming. We advanced the arts, celebrated culture, and provided more public art opportunities as essential and valued contributors to our community. We supported active transportation, infrastructure, and viable mobility networks, whether it's walking, biking, mobility chairs, or on foot, and traffic circulation solutions. We champion connectivity of the public trail system and advanced the system branded as the Temecula Loop.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, Staff. The foundation is laid, and new opportunities abound. We've seen the dirt moved, and beams placed, ribbons cut, and doors opened. We are grateful for the well-planned and productive journey to this point. There are many professionals who have thoughtfully contributed to the plans and execution to the benefit of our entire community. We are particularly pleased to highlight these facilities and amenities. So as you can see up there, these wonderful things in our SIP project highlights, our park upgrades at those four parks that are listed, and as you know, this is ongoing every year. We're going to have a new one at Ronald Reagan Park coming up for the play structure there. Mary Phillips Senior Center, way ahead of the master plan projection for that upgrade at the center. Margarita Recreation Center, again, ahead of the timeline, just spectacular. We had the ribbon cutting and the grand opening is coming up here in a couple of weeks. Community Rec Center with Phase One, we're starting to get into Phase Two. It's going to be pretty spectacular when Phase Two is done, you know, looking at the new splash pad and all the great things that are happening there. And then progress on the skate park, again, with amazing community input. Got a lot of that input right at our commission and made some recommendations onto our staff and then onto the council for these great things that you've done for those two areas. Thank you.
Okay, so this is my effort at a one-minute personalized story as a commissioner. I started out visiting the senior center for their events, and then I helped serve meals there. Also, I did so with the Temecula Summer Food Service Program. Since that time, I've branched out to support a variety of events, including art nights and art competitions. I judge and emceed the awards event for the plane air competition last fall at the Temecula Valley Museum. A record 36 local artists participated in that event last fall. More recently, as the commission chair, I've visited and toured the Temecula Library. This impressive facility is the busiest library in Riverside County, with a door count last year of over 229,000 and a circulation of well over 500,000. As a commissioner, I also seek to integrate myself as a participant in community events and activities. For example, count me among the 12,500 participants in city contract classes last year, as I have enrolled in multiple pickleball classes. I've also enjoyed a variety of tribute band shows as a resident citizen at the Temecula Theater. In 2023, the theater in the Merc hosted over 43,000 attendees and nearly 300 performances.
I love serving our community by being the eyes and the ears from our community, to bring feedback, also by being the hand and the feet of the city to bring assistance. I want to highlight the mural project as pictured in the middle of the slide. It's a place to showcase emerging artists who are very talented. It's so impressive considering the ginormous size of the canvas. I want to end with a quick story to demonstrate the value of feedback. I had a conversation with a mom at the park ribbon cutting. She literally said, "My family loves paying property taxes because of all the improvements
Well, even though Commissioner Castro is not here, he just popped up out of turn. So I'm going to present for Commissioner Castro. Commissioner Castro is, we're just so honored to have him on our commission. He is a, he just retired from lifelong service for the government. He is a great patriot, and he sees things from the light of that, of working for a big government and coming down to local government. He's been very impressed. One of the things, you can see the picture of Ernie and Lisa, his wife, down in the bottom picture there. They moved here in 2021 from Virginia to Temecula. And as many folks do, they research it well, and they, you know, have been so pleased with Temecula, but they did a lot of studying and decided this is the place they wanted to be. And you can see that Ernie's been to a lot of ribbon cuttings, and he's just so impressed with the quality of work and the Temecula way. And so it's my honor to present Ernie Castro to you tonight. It's me. So I think it's getting more and more obvious, my focus on this commission has been with active transportation. So you can see highlighted on my slides, the bicycle-friendly community, the Bike Month with Bike Temecula Valley. And just, I feel like that it is a part of what we do at the commission that's maybe not quite known as much, but tonight, I'd like to emphasize that TCSD is more than a fun commission and show how the impact of what we do as a division and a commission have on the quality of life in Temecula, and how that positively impacts business, real estate, health, tourism, and safety. Trails, open space, community outreach, park renovations that happen along our trail network, the planning of the new bike hike park, the active transportation network, and all the major parts of what Community Service Department and the commission focuses on really play into all of those areas in Temecula. And I know that a lot of the planning and implementation are public works and community development, but once those parks and trails and open spaces are dedicated, community service takes over to maintain those and help with the, motivate the use of them. So trails and bikeways are a huge part of our TCSD master plan. They're also a huge part of the city's master plan and the quality of life master plan. And so these resulting projects are something that I would love to celebrate with you as a city council tonight, and looking at that Bike Friendly Community Award in the middle, that we played a big role in that, along with some other divisions, that, you know, we moved from bronze, we were one of three communities to move from a bronze level to a silver level. And this is a very, very important, significant award that we can brag about here in Temecula as one of our gems. So that's what I have for you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Again, I'm Catherine Seismar. I have been a Temecula resident since 1997, and I was appointed to the commission November 19th of 2020. You know, back in the early 2000s, my husband and I had an opportunity to potentially move to a neighboring city to the north. And there was a house with a floor plan I loved, big yard, got in on the development early, put down a deposit, all excited. They had really good cheeseburgers at the ribbon cutting there, so I think that was part of it. But we came home, we started talking, my husband said, "You know, I really like Temecula's nice streets, everything's landscaped nice." I said, "You know, I really like Temecula's parks, and I really like our community service classes that the kids go to, and what if the neighboring city doesn't have that?" That's it, "Go get your deposit back, we're not going, we're staying in Temecula." And I'm so glad we did. And I'm so glad this past year that I had an opportunity to continue championing for our families, because I want to make sure that we're maintaining the same wonderful amenities that my children and our family got to enjoy for future families in our city. As I look towards 2024, my focus that I was enjoying in 2023, and I'm going to continue in this year, is I really love supporting our local arts and our local artists. I've really had an opportunity to get to know them, to build relationships with them, support them at their galleries and showings outside of the city, and that's where I'd like to see myself continuing in this year, supporting our artists. I'm actually kind of contemplating getting some paint again and maybe painting myself. I'm not going to guarantee that you're going to be hanging it here at City Hall, but that's one of the things I want to pursue this year, and as my last child graduates high school, I'm going to go from experiencing Temecula as a family and supporting, experiencing Temecula as an empty nester. So I look forward to enjoying those classes, and I'm not ready for the senior center, but I think I'm going to try pickleball, because I did win a pickleball set, so thank
Okay, so looking ahead to 2024, as the slide outlines some of our interests and priorities in moving ahead, I'll try to sum those up. We do want to continue to implement the Temecula Community Services Master Plan. As a commission, we also want to promote community services, amenities, and facilities to the public. I mean, obviously, as our other commissioners have shared, there are many things coming down the pipeline as we speak that will provide further opportunities for our citizens, exciting about the Margarita Rec Center to keep getting people over there and utilize all of that. We want to ensure, as commissioners, we want to ensure our availability, our accessibility, and our participation at community events, and be able to engage with citizens when possible and appropriate. We have developed a digitized calendar that we are utilizing, so we're in the know as far as who's able to go to events and when they will be there, so we have that transparency and communication. And finally, we want to continue, as Mr. Audi was speaking about, the active transportation, infrastructure, and our public trail system. So those are things we expect to emphasize in 2024.
First and foremost, as a commission, we want to thank Director Russo. It's been a pleasure working with you and all of your staff. You have been just amazing to work with, and it's our pleasure and our honor to champion and advocate for you.
Yeah, thank you so much. On behalf of our commission, we want to thank City Council, the city staff, residents for the opportunity to serve all Temeculas. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
We appreciate this annual checking to confirm our mission and to receive feedback from the council. 2024 is going to be a fabulous year to live in Temecula.
This concludes our presentation, and we welcome your comments and further direction, and we are available to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Again, you guys do an amazing job, and it's very important to create community, and that's what community services does, is creates community, and that's what makes Temecula Temecula. So, comments? All right, thank you. So we're off to the public safety report with Captain Chris Durham.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we do have Commissioner Maddox here to give a presentation for traffic safety.
Got it, okay. Commissioner Maddox.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. I'm David Maddox. It's my privilege to serve as the chair of the Traffic Safety Commission this year. My co-commissioners are Eric Ackerman, Robert Carter, J.R. Richardson, and vice chair this year, Brad Sullivan. The commission meets on the fourth Thursday of each month here in council chambers to discuss topics related to traffic circulation, speed management, and multimodal safety. At our February meeting, we voted 4-0 to approve our action minutes. Skipping ahead to our first business item, we received a presentation on the new Quality of Life Master Plan website. So as a reminder to the folks at home, the Quality of Life Master Plan, or QLMP, represents our shared community values and strategic priorities, which in turn inform how the city budgets public resources. Residents can find the new website at QLMP.Temeculaca.gov, and the website makes all of this information much more accessible. It also serves as a live report card with different measurements and milestones which are updated frequently, so I'd encourage everyone watching at home to check it out. The next order of business was a discussion about e-bike safety. It's a hot topic. Now, all bicyclists must adhere to the California Vehicle Code, and the majority do, but for those who don't, we have an enforcement program. That said, the CVC also gives local agencies the power to regulate the permitting and operation of e-bikes in public spaces. So to that end, TVUSD and RSO are developing a school permitting program for students, which would encompass all of the city of Temecula and some of the unincorporated neighborhoods that are in the valley. And then the commission also voted 4-0 in support of updating the Temecula Municipal Code to define and clarify bicycle usage on city sidewalks and within city parks. So currently, the TMC allows operation of bicycles on most city sidewalks with deference given to pedestrians, but the commission is proposing that we also explicitly allow Class 1, Class 2 e-bikes the same rights, but we would draw the line at Class 3, which can reach assisted speeds in excess of 20 miles per hour. We would also require that e-bike riders dismount in city parks where there's a higher concentration of pedestrians and where certain types of bikes have unfortunately had a higher damaging impact on the park turf. And the idea behind this is to balance the need for pedestrian safety, but also to ensure that our parks and sports fields are preserved for the enjoyment of all. So the commission's recommendation will be vetted by the city attorney's office before coming to the council for discussion and a vote, and that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and the residents of Temecula. Good to be with you this evening. As you can see, calls for service in 2024 for the month of February are 5,239. That's approximately 180 calls of service per day. And that ends my report unless any of you have any questions for me.
Any questions? All right.
Perfect, thank you.
So let's move on to public comments. Do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have three public comments on non-agendized items. The rules are reflected in the agenda itself. Each speaker has three minutes. The first speaker is Mark Swerengen, to be followed by Terry Olson.
Good evening. I only have three minutes, so I'm moving on with this. Hopefully that comes up, be seen. So I've been here before, trying to let you know. So I've been here before, trying to let you know about the situation with the Bird's Sall Soccer Park. The idea that the Temecula Adult Soccer League can take over a lot of the space, and my kids can't use it. I've been paying taxes here since 95, and I am not tolerant of this anymore. These are non-residents from outside the area that are using the kids' area at Bird's Sall Soccer Park pretty much exclusively during the daylight hours. And I've alerted the City Parks Department about this. I don't believe that there's been much action. I've come to you all for a month ago, and you four are my council members, because my council member is gone. So I'm holding, I'm trying to get a vote from you, Mr. Schwenk, Mr. Kalfus, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Alexander. Are you going to do anything about this? Because Mr. Durham's going to see me at the park, and Mr. Ennis is going to have to have my name go through, because there currently, as you told me that there was availability at the park, but there is no public, there is no public record that the adult league has access to the soccer park. You can go on the site right now, and I hope you guys do. And look, there is not anybody that's allocated to those fields that says it's available, all right? So if I have, my 12-year-old has to deal with a 40-year-old man from Lake Elsinore because she wants to use that goal, I'm going to have to have a situation with that guy, all right? So we need to publicize who has the park, who could use it, or we need to look at who can reserve those fields. Because as I see it right now, Temecula is trying to compete with the villages. Temecula is trying to be the next old people's community and not serving kids, all right? You're not serving kids. You are giving it over to non-residents. You're getting played. And in the words of the worst president of the United States, "Come on, man." So I want to know, you guys, my city council members, are you with me, or are you against me? It's a binary choice. Are you with the kids of Temecula and the tax-paying citizens, or are you going to be with the non-residents that are running Bird's Sall Park right now, at this very moment? And Ms. Russo, these were the comments that I got from your staff members. "We love the adult league. It's an easy button. They take care of everything." That's not what we pay our citizens.
Thank you, sir. And the next speaker is Terry Olson, to be followed by Bob Quaid.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Terry Olson. I'm the Executive Director for City SC Temecula. We are a youth soccer club in Temecula. We've been here for 25 years, 501(c)(3). I'm here, I sent some emails to City Council regarding the field allocation in this city. And I was fortunate to get a response from Councilmember Alexander, and I thank you for that. Temecula's fortunate to have you as a leader, and I thank you. The reason I'm here is I didn't get a response. So we have no choice but to make this a public thing. We are engaging our membership. We are the largest youth soccer organization in Riverside County. We have about 4,000 members now, 1,000 players in Temecula alone. That means 2,000-plus voters. So if we can, I would like to, one more time, see if we can get a private conversation on it, maybe 30 minutes. If not, we need to start engaging the public, our membership, on this. Second reason I'm here is I just found out that the pit has been converted to a pickleball complex. News to me, news to most. And that means we are removing one more lit youth park from circulation and giving it to the adults. I can repeat that. We're removing one more field that we don't have from the kids, and we're giving it to the adults. As it stands right now, I coach also, and I do that three days a week. One day a week in Temecula, one day a week in Fallbrook, and one day a week in Manife. I have to. We don't have fields. The fields in Temecula right now are being allocated based on resident-only. We don't count who's on it. Staff has told me they do, but they don't. So we have a Temecula resident applying for field space. He will get it, and there's no control on who's actually on the field. I know, this summer, we train next to football, American football at Summer's Band. And for a fact, 80, 90% of those kids were not from Temecula, but the person who applied was from Temecula, and that is wrong. These are taxpayers. And the big slide up on top there, "We do good things for Temecula taxpayers", not necessarily true. I'm willing to talk to staff about this, continue the dialogue. Just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. About a year and a half ago, I was at a subcommittee meeting in Temecula, in this building, and we discussed a pickleball complex. And I sat three seats to your left, and you told me, you looked me right in the eye, and you told me that you wouldn't do anything with the pickleball complex until Uptown was ready. It's not ready yet. So now we're taking fields away from the kids.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Bob Quaid.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. At the last council meeting, the council approved new user fees for the city resulting from a cost-of-service fee study performed by Wolford Consulting. Although I commend the city for approving this study, I am shocked that these fees have not been updated since 2005, and that this current study started in 2014 and took 10 years to complete. A close associate of mine in the same industry as Wolford Consulting told me that such a fee study should have taken a maximum of one year to complete, and that a city our size should be updating its user fees every three to five years, as confirmed by the comments in the last meeting. Mr. Adams commented that the 10-year delay to complete this study was the result of the Great Recession and/or the global pandemic. However, I find this explanation invalid, as the Great Recession was in 2008, six years before, and the global pandemic was in 2020, six years after this study commenced. As identified by Councilmember Kalfus in his comments, 179 fees, or 23% of the fees, were decreased due to their exceeding the actual cost of service, which is in violation of California law. That translates to the public being overcharged for certain fees over the last 20 years, anywhere from a few pennies, all the way up to $112,000 for certain parking structures. I'm calling on the council to direct staff to remediate this violation by proactively going back between three to five years and making refunds to those individuals and businesses that overpay these fees to the city. This should not be too difficult of a task, as I understand the city's fees records are electronic. And you can minimize the refund amount to $50 to make this administratively practical. Councilmembers, do the right thing for the stakeholders of the city who have helped build it into what it is today. Remedy the failure of your predecessors and refund the money to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-agendized items.
All right, so council reports. Mr. Schwenk.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, happy to go first. If we could throw up the Public Records Act slide first. Just got a couple different slides. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Public Records Act, PRA requests, and how those work. If we could go to the next slide. You can see the link here is available on the city's website. It's pretty simple to navigate. This is on the City of Temecula City Clerk's page, and you can click on down to Public Records. If you go to the next slide, sort of see what that looks like. Anybody can go to the next slide. So anyone can create a profile and submit a public records request. So you basically just have to create an account. It's pretty simple. And then the next slide talks a little bit about what that looks like. And it's kind of interesting. Once a Public Records Act request is submitted, staff will go, they'll pull the information, and then they'll go ahead and upload it to the city's website. And it would look something like this if you were looking for it. If we can go to the last one. Basically, any and all PRA requests are viewable by the public on that same site. It's something I know I routinely go and look. And there's, you know, some very mundane things in there, too. Some more interesting things. So what you can do is, as anyone, obviously, as a member of the public, can go ahead and view all these public records requests. And it shows who requested it and then what was submitted back. So essentially, all Public Records Act requests that are submitted, they can be viewed with three details through this online city portal. There's a little bit of confusion at times about how the PRA process works. This is just, I wanted to take a minute or so to kind of explain how that works. So head on over to the city clerk's website and see for yourself. Okay, and then I have one other slide that I'd like to show. It was spoken to during some of the joint meetings earlier tonight. The Margarita Recreation Center, which is on Margarita near Temecula Elementary School, Margar road right there, is open. We cut a ribbon on it last year, and staffs had the opportunity to get in and get comfortable and get set up to welcome the public. It has been open for a little bit, kind of a soft opening. We wanted to iron out all the kinks and make sure everything was working perfectly. But Saturday, March 23rd, we want to welcome the community to the new Margarita Recreation Center. So I hope to see you all there, and you can check out. There'll be a lot of fun activities TCSD will be doing. You can see the pool and all the facilities that are there. You might have an opportunity to push the mayor in the pool if you want to. But it's sure to be a good morning in the community. And we're really proud of the work and this facility and what it means to our community, and especially the community near Temecula Elementary School. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Alexander? Nothing? All right, Mr. Kalfus.
I do have a few here. First one, yesterday, we know we love our parks here in Temecula. We had another park ribbon-cutting ceremony at Kaia Aragon. This one was a special one for me, because it was actually right up the street from my original home in Temecula, where we were from 1991 to 1997. So it was pretty cool to see my little daughter play on the same park that I played on at her age, but a more updated, better version. So very cool, and thank you to our city staff and city team for putting this together. Next slide, please. And then over the weekend, I had the opportunity to go to Seattle, where we did a climb conquer cure for leukemia and lymphoma society. So this one was actually my first time doing this. We can go to the next slide. And this is a, the other picture was a whole picture of all the Anaheim firefighters there. But we go to the, it's the world's largest on-air climb competition. So you go on air, you have a bottle on your back, you're breathing air in your respirator as you go up 69 floors, which ended up being 1,356 steps. And there were 2,000 firefighters from across the country, as well as the world, that came and attended this event. It was pretty special there. There's the picture of all of our team there. But this one hit home, because we have a firefighter captain, one of my good buddies, who was just diagnosed with lymphoma a few months ago, and he has two young daughters. So we went up there and climbed for him, and he attended as well. But it reminded me that we all have trials and tribulations in life, and we feel like we're going through hard times. But they often pale in comparison to some of the battles that others are fighting out there. So that was an awesome event that I was fortunate to attend and support. That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, now I have a couple slides, too. Go ahead and put the first one up. So I spent last week in DC, actually, I spent 48 hours. We got there at 1:30, 3:30 on Monday, and we left at 3:30 on Wednesday. But got to meet with our congressmen and our senators' offices. And it was a very interesting trip to see, basically, how Washington works. Because it's, your perception is one thing and reality is another. So it was a great trip. And we were there to actually hear that the, our $39 million, $39.3 million project on the Marietta Creek was approved through Congress. And after we left, the Senate approved it, and the president signed it into law. So the Marietta Creek will get Phase 2 done sooner rather than later now, because we got the money. So it was really great to be there for that event. So, next slide. All right, the Sunset Market. I don't know if you know, but twice a month, we have the Sunset Market, which is a really cool, another community service-type event, where it's literally just like a beautiful place to be on your evenings, Wednesday nights. There's food, there's usually a band or a DJ, or... And the whole center court area there is left open, so families can hang out and listen to the band or dance. And there's a market around the city square there. And so I encourage anybody and everybody to come out. If you're tired of cooking on Wednesday nights, use this as your way to not do that. So there's really good food vendors and just a lot of very unique items that are for sale at this Sunset Market. Next slide. Okay, I wanted to talk, too, about another workforce housing, low-cost housing project that we have here in Temecula. So this is the Vine Creek Apartments. If you go across the Main Street Bridge, it's right at the end. The sticks are up right now. But it's 60 all-affordable housing units within walking distance of Old Town, with income ranges between $19,000 and $67,000, with rents as low as $496 a month up to $1,500. So, and the city invested, oh, I forgot to say, 12 of those 60 units are for families with special needs or individuals who have special needs. So that's a really cool part of this project, that it has a special needs component that if it's a special needs adult that needs an apartment, this is a great opportunity for them. But I was going to say that the city, we spent $6.7 million to basically buy down these rents for the next 55 years. And this was money that was actually, could have been programmed for anything. It was not programmed for affordable housing. We, as a city council, decided this was an important investment in our community and an investment in our citizens who need an opportunity like this. So we are always looking for opportunities to be able to give our citizens a proper and a great place to live. And this is going to be one of those. As you can see from the artist renderings, it's going to be a beautiful complex. So thank you, city staff and the rest of the council for approving this project. It's a fantastic project. All right. Consent calendar. So item number one, wave reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of February 27th, 2024. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve agreement with Alliant Insurance Incorporated for insurance brokerage services. Number five, approve initial study and adopt mitigation negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for Marietta Creek Bridge at Overland Drive, Project PW16-05. Number six, approve Second Amendment to agreement with REAP Fire Protection, Inc. for fire suppression systems maintenance services. Number seven, approve Second Amendment for annual agreement for paving maintenance services with NPG, Inc. Number eight, receive and file temporary street closures for 2024 Spring Fest events. I will accept a motion.
Move consent.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Please vote. So I will adjourn the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will now convene the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still present. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to consent calendar. We have one item. Item nine is approve action minutes of February 27th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Let us please vote. And that item passes 4-0. Thank you. We'll now move to our Community Services Director report.
Good evening, everyone. Just one slide and then we have a staff report. So Yvette, if you'd like to come on up. So I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday is our special games. It's a very special event we hold annually at Great Oak High School, which provides an opportunity for athletes of all abilities to enjoy and some fun and games with their buddies at Great Oak. That's on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and everyone is welcome to come out and join in the fun. Now with that, I'd like to turn it over to Yvette Martinez, who's going to provide an update on the Margarita Recreation Center for everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, fellow staff and community members. Let me just make sure we get our presentation up there. There we go. Thank you. So my name is Yvette Martinez, Community Services Manager, and I have the pleasure of presenting to you an update on our newest recreational facility, the Margarita Rec Center, also known as the MRC. And so thanks to Public Works and everyone who has been involved in this project, the Margarita Rec Center is now open to the public and we are very excited to share with the community all that this new facility has to offer. And so for those in the community who might not be familiar with this facility, the Margarita Rec Center was conceptualized as a place and space in the community for everyone. And so the MRC is Temecula's newest intergenerational recreation center, offering an array of programs and activities for people of all ages and abilities. The MRC will fill many gaps in the community, promoting health, wellness, enrichment, education and social and recreational activities for all. It's also a space that takes a collaborative approach of designing programs and facilitate interaction across and between generations. So what does the MRC feature? The MRC is a beautiful building, if you haven't already seen it, designed with everyone in mind. It has a variety of features, including an open inviting reception area for the community to register for activities, learn more about programs, or simply to pick up a book from our free lending library. We also have a classroom fully equipped with technology, a dance studio with mirrored walls and ample space for dance, yoga and fitness classes. We have a large multipurpose room, which can be divided into two spaces, providing versatile space to accommodate a variety of programs. We also have an outdoor patio space with ample seating and of course, our most, one of, part of our most popular amenity there is our zero-depth six-lane warm water pool. So what can the community look forward to this summer? As you know, this will be a space shared by many generations. And so just to give you a little glimpse into the program opportunities, the MRC will be home to special needs and human services programs, many that the community has grown to love, such as our High Hopes and Skip program. We will now offer our summer meals and nutrition workshops as part of our summer food service program at this site. So parents and caregivers can bring their children to stop by during the summer months for meals and activities. We're also excited and looking forward to our partnership with Temecula Public Library to roll out literacy programs and a little free lending library to promote early literacy and provide access to books. We'll also be launching a new summer camp called Camp SOAR. We'll have a variety of workforce development programs for young adults with special needs, family engagement workshops partnering with nonprofits to bring family support through various parent workshops, activities and programs. We'll have water aerobics for older adults and adaptive swim lessons for individuals with special needs, yoga, dance and art classes and so much more. So essentially, as you can see, the Margarita Rec Center will be a place for everyone. It will truly embody the spirit of community, where everyone feels welcome, everyone feels a sense of belonging and has access to resources and services that enhance their quality of So as I mentioned, we are currently hosting various special needs programs and class activities. We are also available to the public Monday through Friday between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. to answer any questions or if anybody wants to just stop by, check out the facility, learn more. We're also taking the time to prepare the facility for our upcoming spring and summer activities and we look forward to sharing all of those at the upcoming open house. And so with that, again, I'd like to invite you all to come out to the Margarita Rec Center Open House being held on Saturday, March 23rd. This is going to be a great time for folks to stop by anytime between 9:30 to noon to tour the new facility, learn more about classes and programs and meet our dedicated team of staff. So we do hope you can join us as this will be our official grand opening and will be an exciting time for the community to come out and check out their new intergenerational facility and get excited about the summer. So that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Yvette. Any questions or comments, Yvette? We appreciate it and this is a really big deal and this is going to be a really nice facility for our community. Thank you for giving us an update.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Madam Director?
Nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. General Manager?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, Board of Directors, anything? All right, we are adjourned.
So I'll convene the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Oh, there is no meeting. So I'll convene the Temecula Public Finance Authority. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right. So I'll go onto the consent calendar, which is item number 10, approve action minutes of February 27th, 2024. And item 11, adopt ordinance number TPFA 2024-01, levying special taxes within Community Facilities District number 23-02 Prada. I'll accept a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded motion. All right, that passes 4-0. Do we have an executive director's report?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Board of Directors? Okay. I will adjourn that meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, which is item number 12, introduce ordinance adding Chapter 9.90, unlawful possession of a catalytic converter to the Temecula Municipal Code at the request of Subcommittee members Mayor Pro temp Calvis and Councilmember Alexander. Can I have a staff report from Captain Durham?
You may. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the city team and residents of Temecula. There's a photograph of a catalytic converter and I'll explain why we're here, but that's the best one I could find online. Next slide, please. So we are here at the request of the Mayor Pro temp and Councilwoman Alexander, who are part of the Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee. They instructed the city attorney to draft an ordinance that'll help prosecute individuals responsible for catalytic converter thefts. But to back up, let's talk about why they're valuable and what it is. A catalytic converter are emission-controlled devices found in exhaust systems on most vehicles. They are targeted by criminals because they contain precious metal. These criminals recycle this precious metal while the victims suffer the cost of the repairs. And it's not just the cost, it is also the inconvenience. It's also the delay if the parts are not available. It's a huge ripple effect of inconvenience, not just the cost. The other thing that makes the job difficult of identifying catalytic converters is that there's no identifying marks. There's not a VIN, there's not a license plate on them, so it's really hard to track them down. Next slide, please. And so I had my crime analyst pull some stats for you for the city of Temecula. So in year 2023, the city of Temecula had 117 calls for service where catalytic converters were stolen. In comparison, and it's just to show that it's a regional problem, in the county area that I'm responsible, so think French Valley and wine country, there is an additional 31 calls for service. So it's not just something that's isolated to Temecula, it's, it's, it's a regional problem everywhere. Next slide, please. And so here's some data that shows the time that dispatch is receiving the call. It's not the time of theft, but what you can see though is you can see that it fluctuates when probably people are trying to leave for work. You have your morning crew, you have your swing shift crew, they go out to their vehicle, they start their car, their truck up and it sounds like a Harley-Davidson and now they know, I've got a problem. Next slide, please. And so here's some data on the times of week. It's pretty sporadic though, but midweek, like Tuesday and Thursday are our highest calls for service volume. Obviously, the weekends dip because people aren't necessarily at home. They're out of town. They're using that vehicle to leave. Next slide, please. And so this is what I want to avoid. This is pictures of catalytic converters, there's 13 of them here. If you really, really look in, you can see some are cut with, with saws, others are acetylene torches. So your deputies right now may stop a vehicle in the middle of the night that has this in their trunk or in the bed of their truck. And there's absolutely nothing they can do because there's no way to tie them back. So they lose the ability to detain someone for further investigation. They may be able to do that for a second, call dispatch, do we have any calls pending for a catalytic converter theft? They may ask their beat partners, is anyone looking for, you know, a red Nissan truck that may be related? But ultimately, we have to let them go. And you and I both know what they're doing with it and I just need a little bit of help. So this is the proposed ordinance. Next slide, please. So the proposed ordinance is adding Chapter 9.90, unlawful possession of a catalytic converter. And so it kind of breaks down what lawful possession is and that includes being the lawful owner of the catalytic converter or being in possession of the catalytic converter with the lawful owner's written consent. But here's the proof of ownership and this is where it would really help. Proof of ownership would include written documentation identifying the vehicle and the following types of documents. So perhaps a bill of sale from the original owner with photographs, verifiable documentation from an auto body shop proving the catalytic converter was relinquished by the previous owner, verifiable, verifiable electronic communication from the previous owner, photographs from the vehicle with the, with the catalytic converter originated, vehicle registration associated with the, with the catalytic converter. We're not, we definitely, if someone wants to replace their catalytic converter, by all means, let them do it. But if they get stopped, are they the registered owner? Can they show proofs of the repair? Maybe there's etched VIN or California driver's license marks on the catalytic converter. Ultimately, this puts the onus of proving the catalytic converter is not stolen on the person in possession of it. It allows deputies and city staff, code enforcement, to actually detain someone, to hold them accountable. Next slide, please. And so the, the city ordinance allows this to be a misdemeanor, the fines not to exceed over 1,000. Administrative citations are also an option, again, not to succeed 1,000. There's also in the proposed ordinance, separate offenses. So like in the photograph that I showed you where there was 13, those are 13 individual offenses that they could be held accountable for. Next slide, please. And so my recommendation for you is to adopt this ordinance so that we can hold people responsible for catalytic converter theft. I'm sure some of you, people in the audience, people at home, have a friend, have a loved one that has suffered from this. And it's unfortunate and really easy to do, especially if you have an SUV, especially if you have a lifted truck. I have a good friend of mine, this is how he parks his Class A RV at a storage place. So he uses it maybe only two to three months. This is how he found out, getting ready for a trip, loading the family in, fired it up and it sounded like a dragster. Please help us hold these people accountable. Next slide, please. And I'm willing to take any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Chief, if you can just, just verify, I want to make sure I understand this right. So if somebody had 13 catalytic converters in their truck or, you know, transporting them, is each one of those a misdemeanor or the whole, the whole?
Under the, under the city ordinance, each one of those individual would be a, a separate count. But what the city ordinance really does is gives us the legal authority to detain someone because I want to hold them accountable under the penal code. So it's a nexus for us to do our job more effectively versus letting them just drive away.
And what does that look like, putting them, or I guess getting that under the penal code? I mean, are we looking at eventual felonies possibly?
Correct. But this is the nexus to get there. I can do that legal detention.
Excellent. So, and each one of those counts would be $1,000, is that correct as well or just the whole?
Up to, yes.
Up to 1,000?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Great job.
All right. I'll move item 12.
We do have a, one public comment.
Public comment.
And this is a business item. We only have one public commenter, Darrell Terrell? Terrell? You have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Darrell Terrell. I'm not speaking as a City or Reno Valley Plan and Commissioner, but a Reno Valley resident. I want to thank you, Honorable Mayor Pro temp and Councilmember Alexandra, for bringing this proposed ordinance forward. How have we gotten to the point where the Sacramento lawmakers think that the appropriate response to a crime is to weaken criminal penalties or not making it a crime at all? And that sums up, sums up what state law AB 641 is. We have to remember why this law was created in the first place. It's because law enforcement, like the captain said, had a difficult time catching these thieves. Instead, the people in Sacramento got this bright idea that make, made a law that's nothing but a licensure and a penalty scheme only for those deemed as automotive dismantlers who fail to operate their business in accordance with the state law. What kind of system is that? I mean, automotive dismantler? And, and having, in essence, having too many converters will make a, to make someone a dismantler subject to the statute, but that's, that's all. And the statute does not penalize the mere possession of a detached converter. And that's why the people in Sacramento intended this law to be not a crime, but a automotive dismantler license violation. And rather than making possessing a catalytic converter a new crime, they expanded the definition of a automotive dismantler. See, see where I'm going with this? So that if someone has stolen multiple converters, then the case state law says nine before you can hold somebody accountable, but you're not even holding them accountable. You give them, say, hey, you violated the, the law, you don't have a license. So that's why I urge the city council and to, to make this a crime. And merely possess a single catalytic converter. It doesn't, this ordinance doesn't concern itself with whether an individual charge meets the definition of a automotive dismantler. Further, it would apply to individuals possess even a single detached catalytic converter, unlike the nine. So, and I mean, to sum this up, what you guys have done is, is made it simple for everybody. One, you're done, or eight, you skate. What that means is, other cities who don't have an ordinance like you guys have, they don't know when, if, like the captain, if the deputies come out there and, and say you have nine to 10 in the car, say, say you have five or six, you just let them go. But if you got one, at least it has a probable cause. And my whole mission has been from the get-go, is to have a unifying enforcement mechanism throughout our whole county. That's why I'm going to every city I could get my hands on and to have an ordinance like this pass so no criminal will be able to hang their hat nowhere in this county. And the people in this community could be able to sleep at night and just like the captain said, don't get up and your car sound like a dragster. I mean, and, and to think about all the working people you have in this town. A lot of them depend on their car to, to go to, go to work, take their kids to school, pick up, go into the grocery store. Now if something like this happened to them, what would they be left with? Trying to find an Uber and they're not necessarily going to want to report anything because, you say, why not? They got to figure out right now how I'm going to get to They gotta figure out right now, how I'm gonna get to work, how I'm gonna pick my kid up, how I'm gonna go do other things in my daily life. So I'm, I'm glad that you guys have taken this ordinance and shown the rest, and hopefully, the city of Marietta and these other cities will get aboard and let us stick together and show the state of California, especially the, the politicals in Sacramento, this is how you hold people accountable. You don't make them a automotive dismantler. I mean, what kind of, it's ridiculous. And that's why we, as a people, have to continue, to city Marietta, to Menifee, to every single, in your, in your region, to, to sign on to this. Because together, we could hold these creeps accountable, put them in jail where they belong, and people could sleep good at night. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the only public comment. Councils welcome to go ahead and do their motion.
Move, move item twelve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes four zero. Items for future agendas. Does anybody have any?
I do. All right, just one thing, if I can just, before we hit that up, city attorney, city manager, if you can do me a favor and just set up an appointment with the gentleman about the soccer field, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Second, I have an ask and a question for our city council members. There is two things that I think the four of us can absolutely hundred percent, undeniably, say that we can all agree on. Number one, that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the city. Number two, I think we can all agree that being pro Temecula, we support our residents and all of our stakeholders as well as our number one priority. We should always do what is ethically correct, no matter what the cost. And I would like to ask for a Subcommittee or a conversation at the dais on how we can approach the fact that our residents and stakeholders have been overcharged with twenty-three percent of the fees that were over a hundred percent of the actual cost of service that we had noticed since our last meeting. I believe that we need to do what is right. We need to have the hard conversation and looking, looking at giving back the money that was overcharged to the residents and stakeholders. And I believe the hard conversation is gonna be the formula as to what we use. But I think this is a definite move that we need to have the conversation about. Thank you.
So.
At this point, basically with regards to our process, a council member has up to three minutes. Councilmember Alexander used her time, and the council has no further discussion, only clarifying questions if they wish. And you would simply vote up or down at this point to go ahead and place the creation of a Subcommittee on a future agenda. But that is all that the vote is considered at this time, is whether or not you would like to place an item on a future agenda for this topic.
Okay.
And we would need a motion and a vote.
Any clarifying questions? All right. So you make the motion.
Motion.
I'll second. So, let's vote. All right, that passes four zero.
Yes. So at the next meeting, we will go ahead and have an agenda item under business that will be the creation, whether or not council would like to create a Subcommittee,
Okay.
who they would like to appoint, and what the purpose of that committee would be.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, city manager report?
Nothing.
City attorney report?
I have no report this evening.
Well, and I do want to acknowledge that our city attorney, Peter Thorson, lost his wife. So that's, that's a very sad day. That's why he's not here, so. So we're adjourned.